Good evening, welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting, October 15, 2019. I'd like to take a motion to close the executive session where we discuss legal matters and reopen the public meeting. Motion. Trustee Rizzola, second. Trustee Durazi, all in favor? Unanimous. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a prayer from trustee Taylor?
I'd like to offer something simple for us to think about tonight. I spent last weekend with my wife's family out west and flying back eight and a half hours on the plane reflected about this time of year. And we've been through now some wonderful holidays that lead into the fall. We have a lot of other holidays coming up, which are such fantastic times for us to have with our families and to appreciate all they bring to our lives. So if we could just have a moment to reflect on that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. I'd like to take a motion to open the public hearing to revise chapter 290 of the Dobbs Ferry Code to set the maximum speed limit on Ashford Avenue at 25 miles per hour. Motion. Trustee Sullivan, second. Deputy Mayor Cassell, all in favor? Great. Would anybody like to address the board? Yes, ma'am? Just state your name and your address.
My name is Becky Lynn. I live on 80th Briaries. I'm a co-chair of the PTSA Safe Routes Committee. Our committee fully supports the speed reduction to 25 miles an hour, and we appreciate the board's efforts in getting this done. We'd also hope that you would move forward with additional pedestrian crossings on Ashford Avenue. It's dangerous to have such a long stretch of road from Ogden to Northfield without a safe place to cross. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else like to address the board? Becky?
It's so nice to be here at the mic without my kids running around.
State your name and address.
Oh, sure. Becky Pitts, 121 Waldo Avenue. And I just want to thank the VOT for great risk retention and considering 25 miles per hour on Ashford Avenue, as well as Rob Aaron and the Traffic Chair Committee. I fully support the lowering the speed limit to 25 miles per hour. In addition, I just want to bring attention to the crosswalk that is on Ashford between the Lutheran Church and Walgreens there. So at storm, that's a really long crosswalk. So anybody who's not able-bodied to really cross there is really tricky. So if we could consider also narrowing the lanes to one on each side, I think that would really make very much safer crosswalk as well. And then in addition, I just want to just briefly read this. This is the chance of a person who is in a collision with a car going 20 miles per hour, there's a 10% chance of fatality. And if they touch a collision at 30 miles per hour, it goes up to 40%. And at 40 miles per hour, there's an 80% chance of fatality. So I think this is really important. I think all of you.
Thanks for pointing that out, Becky. Would anybody else like to come up and address the board? Rob? Hi.
Hi. My name is Heidi Libby. I live at 18th Briaries Road. I live on my corner priory in Ashford, and I just wanted to give my support to the 25 mile per hour on Ashford because it's, people go very, very fast on that road, and they seem to go very fast by my house. And we have small children, and a lot of people are, more kids are walking to school in our neighborhood, so we'll lower the speed limit.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Rob Aaron, Chair of the Traffic Committee now. Care to go cut away with it?
You gotta stay now for 37 years, Rob.
So, just in terms of context, you know, according to the studies that we did, the Safe Routes School Study, you know, we're really talking about the sort of 15 to 20% of drivers who are the ones who are really exceeding the speed limit very excessively by 39 miles per hour or higher. Most people generally, you know, touching now with the new traffic signal at Ashford and the Burge aren't, don't have time to just accelerate, but it's those outliers that are the real, that is the real problem here. And that's where 25 mile per hour can come up and help the enforcement. The other piece of context to keep in mind is that the Traffic Committee has endorsed 25 miles per hour, you know, early and often. You know, starting in my tenure with the Traffic Committee back in 2007, we've been talking about lowering the speed limit there. I do want to thank, you know, trustee Cassell for championing this as well, as county legislator Mary Jane Shimskey, who's been very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rob. Anyone else like to make a comment? I think, you know, personally, the Traffic Committee has done a tremendous amount. Deputy Mayor Cassell has spearheaded that effort, and the members of the Traffic Committee, and Rob, you're the new chair of that, but working together with many other groups, the PTSA Safe Routes over the years, and state and county representatives, and so there's been a lot done. But that doesn't mean that we've stopped. We continue to look at things to make the village safer. There's nothing more important, I don't think, to this board than safety of our residents, especially our children in the village. So we'll continue to support 100% that effort. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I also want to just get some context as, while Robert said, the Traffic Committee's been looking at this for years. For many years, the road belonged to the county, so we couldn't really do anything without the county's involvement. And then with the Ashford Avenue Bridge, that delayed a lot of stuff. So we've, I think we have it pretty much figured out now that now, once the bridge is done, that we can, the village can now-
Take control.
-take a little more control of the road and its configuration, etc. Also, another 25 mile per hour, we did discuss this with the police chief, and he, as far as I know, he was all for it, because what it does is that it allows the enforcement. Everybody knows there's always like a little leeway with the tickets, you know? The speed limit's 30, yeah, somebody going 35, 39, you might not get a ticket. Now, somebody going 35 can get a ticket. So this will definitely help keep speed down on Ashford. Additionally, just in context, every single road in the village now is 25 miles per hour is the maximum speed, except for Broadway, which is a state road, and we're going to work on that, too. But that, and a big shout out to Mary Jane Shimskey, who really pushed this and pushed it through this, and got, went through all the bureaucratic red tape that we had to go through with the county in order to get this done. So thank you, Mary Jane.
And not only that, in front of the school, going back earlier, reducing the speed limit there-
Yeah.
-making it a speed, a school zone, and reducing the speed there to 20 miles an hour. Andrea Stewart-Cousins, our state senate representative, and Mary Jane, and deputy mayor.
To reinforce that, actually, I would say, to the extent that you run into these representatives at the county and state level, thank them. They know, they'll recognize it. It'll help reinforce, you know, that their efforts on our behalf for our village have paid off.
Great. Anybody else like to address the board? Anybody on the board have any other comments? No? Okay. So I'll take a motion to close the public hearing and revise chapter 290 of the Dobbs Ferry Code to set the maximum speed limit on Ashford Avenue at 25 miles per hour. Trustee Rizzola, second. Trustee Durazi, all in favor? Great. I wanted to make, if the board would allow me, usually we make some of these announcements late in the evening, but being that there's people here. We had the Ferry Festa, and it was a great day and a great success. Thank you to the village employees and-
Thanks for the weather, Bob.
Oh, well, the reason I wanted to do it now, I wanted to thank Mr. Festa himself, Patty Stein-Snyder. Great. Thanks, Patty. Okay. So we have courtesy of the floor. Would anybody like to address? Patty! Wow. What a surprise.
So Patty Stein-Snyder, Chair of the Festa Committee. I think we had a really great event. Everybody I've talked to, with the exception of three people, are very happy about it. And I don't really care what those three people have to say. They could have solved the problem for themselves, and they either didn't sign up, or they didn't think about saying, "This is, this spot doesn't work for me. Can I move someplace else?" Anybody who asked for that, we did it. Tremendous thankings have to go this year to the village staff, particularly to Liz and Charlene. We had a little bit of a glitch. We didn't have anybody to man the parking lot when all the vendors were descending upon it. Larry's been there in the past years, he knows how insane it is. But somehow, Liz and Charlene being there, it ran much smoother than it ever had since the past. We had two people, but we did a much better job. I think there's something much more I'm sorry to pay to move out there. So, big thankings. That was, I was really worried that was going to be a disaster. Thanks to Jeff and to David and to Megan for all of the work you guys do keeping track of all of the numbers. Wrap Department this year, Kendra did a really, really great job. She handled all the inflatables. She was a go-to person for figuring out how to make everything work, which was great. DBW, once again, just an absolute tremendous job. When you realize what a mess that place is, and a great job they do in putting it back in order in less than an hour, it's just phenomenal. So Steve and Ken and all their guys, you know, Danny Gardner was there, he was doing a lot of work. You can't have this happen in this day and age without a really, really good police chief. And we are really lucky to have a guy who gets it, who understands it, who finds that perfect balance between allowing things to be fun, but also enabling us to be safe. It is really amazing when you start to realize that they have to think in terms of positioning large vehicles at the entrance points, so that if some crazy person wanted to do harm, they're not going to be successful. So tremendous thanks to Rick and his people for keeping us safe. I think it's really phenomenal what he pulls off, because he does it with softness. It's like, there's no big, you know, sense of like, you know, we're here, we're having our time. It's, they're part of the fun, and they interact well with people, they take photos with trustee-
Selfies.
Selfies, I guess, okay, whatever. You know, Christie's not here tonight, but she's really a great go-to. All I need to do is say, "Can you handle the ads again this year?" She takes care of all of it. She updates everything, she gets it all put together, she gets it off to the newspapers so that it's, you know, printed in the right days in the right place. Obviously, we need to really thank the sponsors. This year, we had a couple different people step up. We had Compass last year, we had Compass again this year. We also had RXR, who I guess, one of the people who's very involved in the kids' sports, said, "Look, you know, we understand there's a problem. We might not be able to have the inflatables if we don't have that comp." And they just stepped up and said, "Look, we'll take it, we'll cover it." So that was really awesome.
That's great.
They're a great organization, doing amazing things in New Rochelle. It'll be interesting to see if they have any interest in Dobbs Ferry, you know, for different kinds of things in the future. We also had Wegmans participate as a sponsor. We had Regency, we had the farmer operation that's down in-
99 Cedar?
Yeah, they, you know, they came, you know, I'm still not sure what they're going to, you know, how they're going to set up, but everybody I talk to loves the stuff that they're selling, it's really great. And there were others, Regency was involved, they made contributions this year. We got to thank the vendors and the bands, because they come and they make it, you know, it's one of the reasons that it's a good place to be. And all the people who came, and of course, the trustees for letting us do this. When people ask me, "Well, how much work do the trustees do?" I say, "It doesn't really matter. We're not allowed to use the streets if they don't say yes." So thanking the trustees is great. And as Larry was saying earlier, you know, I didn't know you had it, Bob, but you delivered two big years of weather.
Thank you, thank you, Patty.
Really, really, we appreciate it.
It was hard, it was late, I was up late that night with the sun dancing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You really, people-
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you, Patty.
Yes.
People don't, thank you, Patty. I'm not sure if anybody realizes what an impact that event has outside the village, people viewing the village and what, you know, how it brings everybody together in the village. It's a great event, and it was a great day, and everybody had fun, including myself, and so thank you, thank you for what you did and for all those that participated. It was great. Anybody else like to address the village board? No one?
Mayor?
Yes.
Before you continue, would you consider a resolution to adopt the local law, having seen no negative comments this evening?
Oh, on the-
There is a proposed adoption resolution.
Okay.
It correctly has been pointed out to me, has a typo in it, which I will definitely tell Liz about afterwards, but there's a resolution of adoption, and it would be helpful to those who came in support of the local law lowering the speed limit. You're going to adopt this local law as number-
So I will take a motion to adopt the local law. Deputy Mayor Cassell, second. Trustee Durazi, all in favor? Do you think I should read the resolution?
Not necessary.
No? Okay. Okay, I'd like to appoint Alyssa Fassman as Chair, and Chad as Vice Chair, Denise Wooden as Secretary, Rob Baron, Kathy Bobenhousen, Kathy Dean, Susan DeGeorge, Ronald Russell, John Murphy, Nino Orville, Patty Stein-Snyder, and Lita Stotts as vagrant holders of the Ad Hoc Sustainability Task Force, and trustee Taylor as trustee liaison for a term of one year. Motion? Oh, appoint. That's it?
They do a phenomenal job.
They do.
Phenomenal.
Unbelievable.
As a board liaison, it's a pleasure to work with this group, which is largely self-sufficient and incredibly productive in terms of putting things in a very practical and yet, you know, a way that keeps moving the village forward. So thank you, guys.
You are the premier group in Westchester County. I mean, you're really unbelievable what you-
I'm clear.
We go ahead for the state. Great. Thanks, Alyssa and group. Consider a motion to reappoint Ms. Elizabeth Draper, Village Clerk, as the Climate Smart Communities Coordinator for the Village of Dobbs Ferry, as recommended by Ms. Alyssa Fassman, the Chair of the Sustainability Task Force. Thank you, Alyssa. Motion. Trustee Durazi, second. Trustee Rizzola, all in favor? Unanimous. Consider a motion to refer a list of potential errata in the Village of Dobbs Ferry's codebook to the Planning Board for review, comment, and recommendations. Do we have a discussion?
We have to discuss that.
Any comments from-
You can make the motion and the second, and then have the discussion.
I'll make, I'll take the motion.
Take the motion.
Okay.
And the second, and then have the discussion.
Trustee Rizzola, second.
And then discussion.
And now discussion before the vote.
Trustee Taylor, all in favor? Oh, we're not going to vote, okay.
Before the vote, yeah.
All right.
Let's discuss.
I mean, I can start, I mean, in my understanding, what we were being asked to do is to refer, there were, I think, five proposed changes to the code, and we're referring them to the Planning Board to determine whether they're a Scrivener's error or substantive change. Is that right, Laurie?
That's correct. They have two pieces of correspondence, four in one piece and one in a second letter.
I think that the, there's only two out of the five actually warrant whether or not they're actual Scrivener's errors or substantive changes that we need the Planning Board to advise us on. And I think the other ones involve substantive code changes that we know are substantive changes, so we can have the, refer them to the Ad Hoc Code Committee to review, make recommendations, and then the board can refer it to the Planning Board for their input at that time. So I don't know if you want to talk, Laurie, or you want, about which ones are-
Sure.
-the Scrivener's errors and which ones are substantive.
Sure. I think there were, we had had a conversation, I doubled that, that there was a section, I think it was items one and two on the letter dated September 12 from Gotham Design and Community Development. Those appear to be Scrivener's errors, and certainly, having the benefit of the Planning Board's review of those potential Scrivener's errors would be helpful, because there are members on the Planning Board that were involved very closely with those code changes. So being able to get sort of a second on your interpretation of those would be helpful to you. Perhaps some of the others are more substantive in nature, and you might be better benefited by sending that to your Code Committee first, getting, getting that gelled into a potential law and then making that referral under your code. It's entirely up to you, of course.
A clarification, you said one and two on the, the-
September 12.
The 12th letter. I thought it was just one, and I thought the second one was the, the other letter we received on-
I stand corrected if that's-
Yeah, that's on the fourth.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, the one about the 19 Livingston and the-
Correct.
-the line on Maple.
The October 4th letter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are the two that I thought were more obviously a mistake.
Well, I think that's number two in the Gotham letter, right, for Maple?
Number one, no. Number two in the Gotham letter is about the MDR 2 zone.
Okay.
Okay.
Am I correct on that?
It is about the-
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Did anyone else have an opinion on the process at this point?
My only opinion on the process would be that this is something that we ought to move forward with expeditiously, whichever steps we take, and in particular, if we're referring it to the Committee or the Planning Board, that we try and do so encouraging a tight timeline so that we can get this dealt with.
Sure. The Scrivener's errors are very easily rectified-
Yeah.
-as Liz, I'm sure, can confirm. Sometimes, just notifying General Code that it was an error in drafting, and not a substantive issue. General Code, who produces your codebook, is very happy to make changes of that nature. So perhaps getting this on the next Planning Board, they meet on a Monday, Monday night.
But this is just for them to review and make a recommendation?
Right, this is for the two-
No.
The two that you have determined as Scrivener's error, and you're just looking for them to confirm that, yes, that is true, because many of the members on your Planning Board went through the process with this. So if it's a mistake, these are the kinds of things where the, for those of you that may have not have read the backup material, where the table doesn't match the text-
Right.
Right.
And the text would govern in that case, but with reading it on the, from the street, you wouldn't know that. So you would want them to mirror each other. That's the October 4th letter from Mr. Bros. You know, you just want to get a quick, yes, you're right, that's a Scrivener's error, it was never meant to be that way, it was supposed to mirror. You just want to get a quick response from the Planning Board and those two, and they can be corrected forthwith. And if you would-
I think that, oh, sorry.
If you would want to refer it to your Code Committee, you can, you can give them a tight deadline of, you know, some sort, but that would entirely be up to you.
So I think that the request from, in the October 4th letter from John Bros about whether the appendix concerning townhomes in the MDR 1 matches the text is clearly whether or not it's a Scrivener's error, and the Planning Board should let us know. I think the same is true for whether or not the line on Maple Street is drawn appropriately on the zoning map or not. I also think it is true for the second one in the Gotham September 12 letter, because it's saying that the tables in the appendix don't match the dimensions that were intended for the district, so I think that could arguably be a Scrivener's error that we should get the Planning Board's comment on. It's my opinion.
So there are three.
There are three. And then three and four in the letter, you know, the third one involving whether or not 443 Broadway should be in the Broadway zoning district or not. I mean, whether they say, I don't see how you can say a big zoning change like that is a Scrivener's error. So it's something that I think would be a substantive zoning code change that needs to be reviewed inter, on the Code Committee, and then we can refer to the planning, through the VOT, to the Planning Board. And then the cluster plans is clearly, to me, a substantive change, not something that's just a simple Scrivener's error where the table doesn't match the text, or the line was drawn in the wrong place. So I think those two are substantive changes that we should refer to the Code Committee. And I agree with Larry that we should set up, set up a deadline and have a short meeting on that. I mean, it's mid-October, so I'm sure we probably wouldn't be able to meet until sometime in early November, if I can get everyone scheduled, but yeah, I'm happy to be on a short timeline, timeline with it. That's my recommendation and suggestion.
My concern is, could this affect the village adversely in any way?
The Scrivener's errors? They're prob, it's probably adversely affecting the village now-
Now, yeah.
Okay.
Since there's a confusion.
Conflict.
And it's not clear, and you would want, you would want the clarity, because case law often indicates that mistakes go against the drafter, so you don't want to be put in a position where you're trying to argue a mistake.
Is the litigation involving that area resolved, or is that still pending, or no?
I am not representing the village in that litigation.
Still pending.
So I don't know, would this have any bearing on that at all, or?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
But even if it did, it's something that the board could take up when and if the Planning Board says it's a Scrivener's error that should be corrected, and if we think it's a code change that we want, after it was corrected, we could always make a substantive change after a public hearing, so it's not-
I'll certainly get a status of that litigation.
My last thing that was reported on, it was, they had an, they filed a notice of appeal, the developer, and that I don't think that any appeal perfected.
Okay. But I think you should really look at the difference in the wording in both places very carefully to decide what you want, and also what was said in the papers.
That's why-
Appeal has not been perfected yet.
We're not making any changes, we're referring something that we believe is a Scrivener's error to the Planning Board to tell us whether they agree it's a Scrivener's error, the table should match the text. Right now, we have a conflict. The text says one thing, and the table says something else, so they should match, whichever way they match.
So it's to your benefit to get the opinion from the people that were involved in the process-
Absolutely.
As quickly as possible.
And the other two, if we vote to put them to the Code Committee and not the Planning Board this time, we'll eventually go to the Planning Board, I presume. It's not-
Yes.
Something that's not going to be reviewed by them.
Right. I'm just concerned about the property.
Right, and the current action.
I'll check on that status. It might be that the statute of limitations has passed on perfecting that. I'm not sure when the notice of appeal was filed, but they have a pretty tight turnaround to perfect that under Article 78 of the CPO.
But again, we can review that, and if we think it's an issue at the time, the board doesn't have to take action, it's not, we're not required to, if the-
Yes.
-Planning Board says, "Yes, it's a Scrivener's error, and we think you should change the table," we're not required to do that, it's just their recommendation, that's correct.
Correct, yes. It's only action that you can, you can do. So obtaining this opinion- So, obtaining this opinion would be helpful to the process and moving the process.
And even if we had to hold off on it because of the litigation, it would be helpful down the road whenever that's finally resolved, one way or another.
Don't you think the finding of the planning board saying it was a Scrivener's error could possibly be used in the litigation?
No, because the record on an Article 78 proceeding is established at the time a decision was reached. Nothing that comes after can affect the outcome of an Article 78 proceeding. When you answer an Article 78 proceeding, you have to produce the record upon which that decision was reached. Once that record is, the record is the record. It cannot be changed. There's no danger of that.
And we should go forward.
We should. So, we'll take a vote then on this motion? All in favor?
Well, we need to decide exactly what
Trustee Sullivan says we should do, suggest.
Right. You can amend the motion, you can amend the motion to include the three items, items one and two in the letters dated September 12th and the one item that is contained in the letter dated October 4th from Mr. Bros. Those were the three that trustee Sullivan was suggesting should be referred immediately. The remaining two items in the Gotham letter dated September 12th can be sent to the code committee. As she has suggested, that would be the motion on the table, that would be the revised motion on the table.
So, consider a motion to refer a list of, refer items one and two from the letter dated
September 12th.
September 12th and item one from the letter dated October 14th.
Yeah, it's, it's the entire letter, yeah. There's only one item in the October 4th letter.
The 4th, October 4th.
So, you would take, you would take a first and second on that motion as revised.
Okay. So, I'll take a motion. Trust, trustee Sullivan, second. Trustee Vazillo, all in favor? Okay. Your vote, Tom?
Yeah.
Good. So, that's unanimous. Okay. Consider a motion to authorize Charlene and Delicato, village administrator, to sign an extension of the contract with student assistance services for one year retroactive to October 1st, 2019, the amount of $58,650 to be paid from the federal grant monies received for the youth services council. Charlene, did you want to say anything?
Basically, this is something that we've done each year. I think it's a little less money this year and it's for technical assistance and assists with the employee, implementation of a program, strategies, provide evaluation data for program reports. In other words, they do all the work to quantify what we've done in the grant, in the federal grant. And the more they do, the more they have the papers to fill out. So, this is not something that is out of toward.
Well, there's a lot of positive feedback and a lot of great events that have been held and
Yes.
I think things are certainly helpful with that organization with the
And a lot of paperwork.
Of
It's a lot of paperwork because it's a grant, but it is money very well spent and they really spend it very wisely.
Trustee liaison to the
Yes.
Youth Services Committee. Okay. So, do I have a motion? Trustee Durazi, second. Trustee Sullivan, all in favor? Unanimous? Consider a resolution approving the tax cerciari settlement with petitioner Arjlee Country Club, Inc., for property located at North Mountain Drive, Cricket Lane, Saranack Street, Washington Avenue, Osceola Avenue, and Belden Avenue.
I have one, just one comment. Being a member at Arjlee, I intend to recuse myself from any votes on this matter.
I believe this cerciari settlement is a good settlement. It's over a period of four years and in fact, we thought it was going to be a little more than that. So, school has approved it, the town has approved it, so we're the last to approve it. And the reason that when you look at the numbers, it says town at the last year, it's because we lost our assessment. We're not, we're not, no longer an assessment unit. It's a town unit, but it's only the villagers' share.
So, do I have a motion?
No one wants to get back
No, no one wants to get money away. I'll go second.
Trustee Sullivan, second. Deputy Mayor Gassell, all in favor? I feel the pain myself.
Well, the, the option, if you don't settle, is that you have to go to trial.
Right. Which costs
It most costs us
Plus a lot of money and you have to get an independent assessor in. It's very arduous. They attempted it only once with a municipal client. Didn't end well.
Right.
Never does.
Never does.
Okay. Consider a motion to approve orders number one and number two for October 2019, as recommended by our village treasurer, Jeff Chuda. Jeff, any comment? No?
No comments unless there's a question.
Great. So, I have a motion. Trustee Vazillo, second. Trustee Taylor, all in favor? Unanimous? Consider a motion to approve a request from Ms. Rebecca Pitts, who spoke earlier here, to have a child-led rally to slow cars in the village on Saturday, October 26, 2019, beginning at Ashford Avenue at 9:00 and concluding at the front of the, I think right now it's at the high school. That's the last I heard. So, this is really to bring attention to speeding within the village by local residents and the children, so.
I think, as we all talked about earlier, you know, this is something of safety and pedestrian safety, particularly among the children in the village, is critical, I assume, you know, to everybody on this board, as we've talked about up here. It also is critical that this type of event, especially with a lot of children on a Saturday morning, is appropriately coordinated. Charlene has, I just want to confirm that the chief is comfortable that this is being organized in a way that's safe and that can be managed in such a way that it, it wouldn't generate problems.
If it's not, he will, he will work
With the kids that were there.
I spoke to him right before this meeting. He felt pretty comfortable with the route going to the high school.
Right.
He will provide officers to make sure that the area is secure for the children.
Safer than going north. So.
They're not going to be laying down in the street.
No.
I just want that to be clear.
You just blew the cover.
I hope not, I hope not, but you may have raised something that
No, it's not going to happen.
It's just critical that it be done in a safe way.
No, but I, I commend the children for taking this initiative because they themselves see the danger of, you know, that is for them. So, you know, kudos to them for taking the initiative to do this and I'm sure that everything will be done nicely and peacefully and they will be safe.
Oh, okay. Very good.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm less worried about the children staging an uprising than making sure that they're safe. That's, that's my bigger concern, but it sounds like that's been taken care of.
Yes.
It's, it's also a teaching opportunity, as I understand that they'll be taught how to cross at the green and not in between, right?
Wow, very good, Laurie Lynn.
Hey, I'm up there.
So, you learned your lesson early and
I was a lieutenant in the safety patrol.
Very good.
Eighth grade.
Okay. So, do I have a motion? Trustee Vazillo, second. Trustee Sullivan, all in favor? Unanimous? Consider a motion to approve a request from the Dobbs Ferry Little League to place banners at Gould Park Fence, the Memorial Park Fence, and the Stop &amp; Shop Fence, November 1st, 2019, to December 31st, 2019. Motion? Trustee Vazillo, second. Trustee Durazi, all in favor? Unanimous? Consider a motion to approve a request from Mr. Ed Trader, president, Walden Woods Board, Ed, of Directors, for a garage sale permit to have a community tag sale on November 9th, So, this is a community event. You have like 20 people, right, that are?
So far, we do have 22 residents.
You should come to
Oh, yeah. One, two.
Hi, out of our 116 individual residences, about 20% are interested in participating in the event.
Fantastic.
And you guys will give us one block permit, so we wouldn't have to do any permits and, and all that kind of shit.
Yeah. It's a great idea, too, to do it all together. Get everybody up there and
And just pointing out, this is a community, so these are actually your roads and it's not village roads that you really
There is one road often happening, which some of our residents is around.
Around, yeah.
No one has, has responded to those residences, so we've hired their community so far.
Great. Thanks, Ed.
Do you have the time of, of the sale? It's not in the agenda. I just want to make sure the public knows. And whether you're accepting, you know, those early birds.
I guess for the record, I should say, I live in Waldenwood and the matter
We were just going to bring that up.
And I haven't responded to whether or not I'm going to do it. I think my wife said she tried and she couldn't, she was blocked out. I don't know if she did it correctly or not. Okay, so.
Definitely.
How badly do you want this one?
So, I'm definitely not voting on this one.
We, I would also, because of the scale of this, I would probably, it'd probably make sense to make sure the chief is aware that it's going on, so that if there's a lot of extra traffic kind of coming and going at a couple of those intersections, that their police department's at least aware of it.
Right. Good idea.
I've already told the chief about it, so he's aware.
Great.
Oh, great. Thanks, Liz.
How many bands you got there?
That's another permit. Inflatables.
Great. Thanks, Ed. Appreciate you coming in. Okay. Do we have a motion? Trustee Sullivan, second. Trustee Taylor, all in favor?
I'm going to recuse me.
You're recusing yourself. Consider a motion to authorize the use of recreation funds in the amount of $15,000 to change the four-foot fence at Gould Park Pool to a six-foot fence.
We should take a motion to add it to the agenda. Just take a motion to add it.
We have to amend the agenda.
There you go.
Okay. So, I'll take a motion to amend the agenda, agenda, to include the authorization to use recreation funds in the amount of $15,000 to change the four-foot fence at the Gould Park Pool to a six-foot fence. Motion? Trustee Taylor, second. Deputy Mayor Gassell, all in favor? Okay.
Can we just say on the record why it's being changed? It's because
Well, now, now you can consider the motion.
Well, they already voted, but
No, we voted
No, we voted
You voted to add it and now
Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry.
You can consider the motion and then
So, we're doing this because I think the recreation
No, no, I think I did. I, I went out of order, sorry.
Now, you have to take the motion to address the issue.
Yeah, there you go.
I apologize.
Okay. I'll take a motion to consider the authorization to use recreation funds to increase the fence from four feet to six feet.
Now, we
Can we vote?
Take the motion.
Or we discuss?
Take the motion and we have a discussion.
Okay. Trustee Vazillo, second. Trustee Taylor?
Now.
Now we have a discussion.
Okay. So, it goes from, Recreation Commission had recommended that we go from four to six feet because the look and feel there along Ashford.
It was required by the Department of Health that it's a six-foot fence around the pool.
It's code.
Yeah.
But the, but the portion that was already there is only four feet.
Four feet.
And so, we have to expend money to bring it up to the six feet to match the new fence it's going to be in.
Correct.
The only other alternative was to put up a chain-link fence, which wouldn't
An unmatching chain-link fence, correct.
Which wouldn't look
The recommission recommended matching the fence and spending $15,000.
Okay.
And so did our superintendent of recreation.
Yes.
It, it makes sense. All that money in the pool is going to be beautiful. You don't want change. It's not cheap in it, you know.
Right. Okay. So, we'll take a motion?
No, you do have to take a vote.
We have a motion.
So, we'll take a vote.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Robert's rules are catching us up. Who is Robert?
Okay. Minutes from September 24th, 2019. Any comments? So, we'll take a motion to approve the minutes. Trustee Vazillo, second. Trustee Taylor, all in favor? Okay. Reports and announcements. Trustee Durazi?
I just want to publicly thank the DPW as well as Jen that is back there with their help with the planters that we did a couple of weeks ago. I'm waiting for them to bloom so that they look all beautiful. I know that Stephen was doing some additional work around the village, but it's always great to work with them because we just, you know, take a day and go for it and everything gets done. So, thank you so much, guys, for all of your help. We are going to add some additional decorations now that Halloween is around the corner, so that will be coming up around the 18th. I also have some announcements for the Youth Services Council. We have an event on October 30th, which is Bobby Petroselli presentation. It is a very interesting and sad story, but one with a very strong message for our youth. And that will take place at Mercy College on October 30th from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. And of course, we're getting ready for the holiday hustle. Vincent, Bob? And that will be the 5K that we do every year and that will be, take place on December 8th at 9:30. We also kick off at Mercy College and it's always a lot of fun. It brings all the community together and it's for a great cause, so I encourage everybody to please get registered and join us on that morning for that. Even if you cheer or you run, just come out and join us.
It's a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun.
And we get a big turnout for that.
Yeah. Close to 500 runners.
500 runners is really
I never win, but I'm there.
Really huge. Thank you, trustee.
That's because you're too busy taking selfies along the route.
Oh, definitely. You know that.
Trustee Taylor?
Yeah, one thing I'd like to mention that people should take advantage of is that this year is the first year, at least that I'm aware is that this year is the first year, at least that I'm aware of, under New York state law, where village residents will be able to vote early. It's become common practice in other electoral districts around the country, and it's a great way to encourage turnout as well as just make the process of voting more convenient. So I would encourage you to, to look on the village website. Liz, I think, has been, did you post the hours yet?
All the dates are posted. There's an alert flyer on the front, so.
Good, good, good. Because we want everybody to have as much of an opportunity to vote as possible.
Great. Thank you, trustee. Trustee Sullivan?
Yep. Rec Department has a lot of Halloween activities planned, so. They have downtown window painting, which you need pre-registration for on October 20th, so this Sunday, from 10:00 to 2:00. I guess the deadline is 12:00 p.m. on Thursday, October 18th. On Friday, October 25th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., they're going to have the Field of Screams at Memorial Park. So you can walk the walkway from the baseball field to the playground without being scared. Can you make it through? That's their question. It's geared towards children eight years and older. The PTSA has their pumpkin fair on the 26th from 10:00 to 3:00 at Springhurst. On the 27th, they have the Spooky Spectacular, so creepy-crawly costume parade. And I think they're closing down the street at 1:00 p.m. It's near the corner of Cedar and Main, March Downtown. And then following the parade, at the bottom of Main Street, they'll have a Halloween bash with inflatables, hayride, petting zoo, Rooney Tunes music, costume contest, arts and crafts, and I'm sure other things. That's a really, sounds really nice, actually. And then Thursday, October 31st, is obviously from 4:00 to 6:00, the annual downtown businesses do trick-or-treating, which is a really nice tradition special to Dobbs Ferry.
Great. Thank you, trustee.
Yes, more Halloween news. This is from the senior program. The senior Halloween party will take place on Tuesday, October 29th, from 11:00 to 1:00. There's music, there's food, people wear costumes. It's really kind of great fun. So the seniors get into the costume parade as well. Movie night, movie Monday on October 21st at 12:45, the movie will be Pavarotti. So a lot of stuff going on at the senior center, and, you know, check it out.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Trustee Sullivan?
I don't have anything.
I have a few announcements. One is, at the recent 2019 NICOM, the New York State Conference of Mayors and Municipal Employees Training School, an annual training school. Our village clerk, Liz Draper, was appointed as a director of the New York State Association of City and Village Clerks Committee. Congratulations, Liz. Liz was also awarded a certificate, 10 years, and it's an appreciation certificate, so congratulations for that. And she was also appointed to the 2019 General Code Municipal Clerks Honor Roll. And that was out of 228 people. So Liz, congratulations and thank you. Excellent. We also received an award, a gold award for the AAA, from AAA in 2019 for community traffic safety programs. So that's big for the village. So thank you to all involved, to deputy mayor and the traffic committee and the safe routes and the chief of police and all the volunteers. That's big news. We also had a nice letter from one of the residents that wrote to Brad, or one of our newer officers, Brad Scala. Brad exhibited a particularly high degree of compassion for the parent and the child. He went out of his way to be polite, courteous, and respectful, and to preserve calm and dignity throughout the whole encounter. So I think that's a really fine thing, and we'll have to make that note to the chief and congratulate Brad. So I'll take a motion, trustee.
Let me just add one more thing, Bob. I just would like to remind the community that this upcoming Tuesday, the 22nd, it will be the district bond vote that we made for the school. And it's going to take place at the high school from 9:00 a.m., from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. And of course, Lisa Brady will, I appreciate that everybody come out and vote and support the bond.
To 9:00 p.m.
To 9:00 p.m. Thank you, Todd.
I better make that an announcement. We also have the Pompeii Dinner, Lady of Pompeii. On the 27th, Sunday. 1 to 6, which is a great event, the spaghetti and meatballs, which is fantastic. I got to get that recipe.
They won't give it to you.
They won't give it to me?
I've tried for years to get it.
Anyway, so thank you, trustee. I'll take a motion then to close during the meeting. Trustee Vazillo, second. Deputy Mayor Cassell, all in favor?